All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 16, 2025 Plastow Planning Board.
Dan Kane.
Yeah.
Rich Leclerc.
Here.
Nolan Pelletier?
Um, en route, but not, might not be here.
Phil Coy?
Yeah.
Liz Costa.
Here.
You haven't already reviewed them. Take a minute to review them. Otherwise we'll.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 18, 2025.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. So it's gonna be 4-0-0. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing, PB 2507, the completeness of an application from Schofield Builders LLC for the review of a site plan that proposes the raising of an existing residential structure and the construction of a 3,750 square foot, three-unit trade business structure, parking, drainage, and landscaping. The applicant is also seeking a conditional use permit for the intrusion of the proposed building into the wetland setback. The property is located at Five Rose Ave, tax map 29, lot 7, in the C1 zoning district. The property owners of record are Dwayne and Pamela J. Schofield. If the application is found to be complete, the planning board may immediately conduct the public hearing. I move to accept the application for 3,750-foot, square-foot, three-unit trade business site plan as noted in the legal notice, PB 25-07, for the property located at Five Rose Ave, tax map 29, lot 7, in the C1 zoning district, as complete.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. It's 4-0-0. All right. Where's yours?
Good evening, members of the board. Do you have any press lists at all?
No, that's just the, it's red, it's muted.
All right. Tom Schamberg of SEC Associates here for the application for the change of use and conditional use permit for the property located at Five Rose Avenue. The property is situated approximately 200 feet west of the intersection of Rose Avenue and New Hampshire Route 125. It consists approximately 0.8 acres of land. The lot currently supports a single-family dwelling with a paved driveway. The property has 165.4 feet of frontage. Parking and structure buffer extending onto the site. The existing 1,735 square foot dwelling originally built in 1920 is in deteriorated, a deteriorated condition and is supported by a private well and an onsite sewage disposal system. The proposed project involves demolishing the existing. Two access drives are proposed to serve the three garage bays. Three variances have been applied for and are as follows. Wetland buffer. This variance request was withdrawn at the instruction of the Conservation Commission as a conditional use permit was more appropriate than the request. Second variance is for Section 220-32i to allow a reduction to the minimum side setback from 35 feet to 10 feet. This would allow the landscape buffer to be met and also improve the existing conditions. The existing dwelling is located 13 point, oh, sorry, 3.3 feet from the sideline. That variance was granted. The last variance was for Article 5, Section 220-32i, and is to allow a reduction to the required front yard setback from 50 feet to 20.8 feet. This is also an improvement from the existing conditions where the existing dwelling is located 18 feet from the front property line. This was also granted. As mentioned, the proposed use is allowed in the district and improves upon all the existing dimensional nonconformities existing on the site. This will provide an improvement on the site while removing the existing nonconforming use. In addition, a roof drywall system and a subsurface infiltrator are proposed to provide groundwater recharge as required in the overlying Aquafer Protection District, again improving upon the existing conditions. 230-12G requiring one parking space per employee, one space for vehicle operating from the premises, and one space for 2,000 square feet of gross floor area for the warehouse use, as well as one parking space per employee and one space for 300 square feet of floor area for the office use is requested. The parking requirement, parking requirement with regards to square footage is met. The two uses require a total of four parking spaces, just taking into account their, you know, per square footage spaces. The proposed use is not for public retail. It will not require daily parking of employee vehicles. Additionally, each trade unit is designed to support the parking of two vehicles. If at this time there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I'm able to.
All right. Just specifically on the waiver request, you know, for this, for this board, you're asking one for the parking, correct?
Yes.
Now, the other waivers that you, you referenced in terms of, well, also there's all the conditional use permit. Intrusion into the wetlands, but there was another waiver that you referenced, or a couple of them?
There were the ZBA. Yeah, so the two variances to the ZBA were for the front yard setback and the side setback.
Okay.
And then it was the 75-foot wetland setback, but we withdrew that as the Conservation Commission decided that it was more fitting to request a conditional use permit than the variance.
Okay. Where, did you submit the waivers or the way granted waivers, the ZBA?
We did not submit the variances that were granted through ZBA. We certainly can submit them before.
No, that's fine. It's just.
I, I mean, I saw the meeting. They were granted.
Specific questions from anyone on the board?
I mean, this vastly improves what's there.
Yes.
I, I mean, to the extent we see these, no different than a previous one, I mean, I think it's classic, great example for the town and the setback waivers, even the wetland intrusions, three feet, right? It's, it's.
It's very minor.
It's very minor.
Yeah, it was three feet in conservation.
Yes, right. Right, so. Yeah.
What's the abutting, what's the abutting business that's, that's next?
Business. I'm not sure of myself. I haven't been out to the site.
I'm pretty sure that's the auto dealer, user, auto dealership.
Isn't that right where that other business wanted to go in?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's so Hannah's. Across the street. It's across the street.
Across the street, yes, yes.
My only concern is, I mean, it's a massive building. There's not, there's not much parking at all. That's my concern. I mean, it's a valid concern. I'm for the project, don't get me wrong, but I'm just, I'm wondering if we're gonna have some problems down the road. It depends what goes in there. I think if you, if you look at the, maybe you could talk about the waiver.
Yeah.
I mean, that, the waiver language that you provided for being a unnecessary hardship. So I guess maybe that, that's an opportune point to kind of expound on.
Yeah. So as mentioned for the parking, the proposed use isn't public retail. It, it won't have. You know, kind of contractors to come in, you know, load up and leave. They might have somebody there in the office, maybe one person, but we really wouldn't anticipate, you know, all the parking spaces being, being filled up for longer than it would take to load something up.
So you think it could be like a plumber would come in, get his supplies?
Yeah.
Out of the bay? So almost kind of like what we have on the corner that's being built now of Old County and 125. That was kind of the same idea, right?
Well, that's the J and R gutter.
J and R.
Right, that was like the same.
But they had the trade, the trade bays or whatever.
Correct, but this is kind of, I guess, almost the same thing they do, kind of.
Yeah.
What you're envisioning is they would store all their supplies.
Yes.
In this bay. So it's basically a garage for the, for the customer.
Yeah, and so the garage also have the space for about two vehicles in them. If, you know, long-term, one had to be parked, it, it wouldn't take up the parking spaces and.
Get whatever they needed.
No, no, there wouldn't be, you know, daily trips from, from people who aren't associated with it who would be there long-term or anything.
So I might be, might have one person in an office there or two people.
Likely, yeah.
And everyone else is coming and going.
Yep. Do you have any tenants in mind at this point?
I don't believe there are in mind at this point, no, yeah.
I understand the concept of it. It's definitely a great improvement. I mean, I'm just, I just, like I said, just want to throw it out there. It's like parking's the only issue.
And there's five spots contemplating, right?
Six.
Six?
Six.
Six plus.
Okay, yeah.
Bay could have two.
Yeah, so a total potentially of 12.
But half inside, half outside, basically, right?
And, and so part of the thing too for the use is it's, it's hard to really quantify per employee, right? Because it's, you know, how, how, you get what I was kind of getting for where it's, they might be an employee, but they, you know, they probably carpool, they come in, leave. It could be a crew of 15 people, but they only have a couple, you know, a couple of cars or.
Yeah, because that would be the only concern, right? If somebody asks, if everybody, their vehicles get packed, yeah, they bring their own personal vehicle.
Dispatch from there.
Other vehicles out.
And at, at least from what I've seen, just from walking some construction sites, a lot of people take their own personal vehicles to the sites. So I think really they'd only be there temporarily just to load up and, and leave.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Anything else? Do you have anything other than, I mean, it looks like this is sort of the diagram. Are you rendering something this?
So we have the architectures that Dwayne Schofield drew up. We have, I believe we submitted a photo to D of kind of the general facade of how it would look based on an existing building.
Okay.
Whereas in, instead of the, you know, kind of gable over the front entrance, it would maybe be over the garage bay entrance and set with the door off to the side. It would be kind of similar style looking building.
Okay. Is there a timeframe when they're thinking of starting work, finishing?
I haven't heard. I can definitely get back on that.
What curiosity is there? I love the graph paper. Old school. Is this artistry of Dwayne?
Yes, it was.
I had a feeling.
Picture, picture back in school.
I actually do the same thing. All right, so.
The overhead projector.
There were a number of suggestions or feedback from our consultant.
Yep.
I believe, looks like, like most of all, look more reference in the notes here, right?
Yes, yep. Most of them are references to notes. There's a couple of minor things, like showing access ports for the subsurface system, but there's no kind of comment that we think would be a big lift or large redesign to address. We don't, we don't have any issue with any of his comments.
All right.
And that covered in the conditional approval motion.
All right. So I guess with respect to, let's say, the waiver, I guess it's worth reading into the record from the Conservation Commission. Dear board members, at its April 3, 2025 meeting, the Conservation Commission reviews, reviewed plans for Five Rose Ave. Wetland buffer infringement is very minor, approximately three feet. Therefore, the Conservation Commission is recommending that the planning board approve the conditional use permit to mitigate the problem. And I think the feedback from the police department, the fire department, apart from, there was some, something about the alarm system or some sort of a Knox box of some kind that.
I, I believe so, yeah. So, but there was, I thought that was pretty straightforward.
Will there be an engineered drawing of this building? Because you're looking at three units, typically fire, fire code issues and stuff.
Typically, that's a building code issue, not ours.
No, just throwing it out there. I was just curious because definitely.
I, I mean, I suspect when you go to apply for a building.
Likely, yeah.
Yeah.
I want one greater detail on the floor plans and everything.
And you're proposing six trees out front?
Yes, yep.
Six maples. Highway has no issues except just the painted stop, stop bars, stop sign at the second driveway.
Yeah, I think those were.
Yep, those were added in the notes.
All there. I don't know. My opinion, this one's pretty straightforward.
All right, well.
I was gonna be, I was gonna say, Tom, don't be afraid to like use an evergreen tree occasionally, too, you know?
Dan loves his evergreens.
They actually, they actually block.
They do. As long as they don't block your side field, that's.
All right, so why don't we address the first waiver here with respect to parking? I move to grant the waiver request for, from SPRR, Article 1, Section 230-12.G to reduce the parking requirements for the project at Five Rose Ave for the reasons stated in the waiver request.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 4-0-0. So. So the next one would be the conditional use permit. All right. I move to approve the application for a conditional use permit for an approximate three-foot intrusion into the wetlands buffer at Five Rose Ave as recommended by the Conservation Commission on April 6, 2025.
I can second that.
Okay, I, all right, sorry. I move to approve the application for 3,750-foot, square-foot, three-unit trade business site plan as noted in the legal notice PB 2507 for the property located at Five Rose Ave, tax map 29, lot 7, in the C1 zoning district with the following conditions. All applicable professional stamps shall be affixed to the final plan for recordings. Driveaway permits from the Plastow Highway Department shall be obtained in copies provided to the planning department. Approved waivers will be noted on the final recording plan by Site Plan Review Regulation Citation Date Approval. All KNA comments are successfully addressed in the plan's updates. Accordingly, all conditions of approval shall be met and the final plans for recording submitted to the planning department within 45 days.
I'll second that one, too. But you need two votes here, just so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's odd.
So you need, you need a vote on the conditional use permit, even though it's grouped together, you just, they're two different things.
Yeah, so you seconded for the conditional use permit, so.
I did.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstains, that's 4-0-0 for a conditional use permit. And the, for the conditional, the application for conditional approval. And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so 4-0-0. L-chip fees. Since there is no recorded plan being amended, there will also be an L-chip fee of $25 payable to the Rockingham County Registry Deeds at the time of the recording of the plan. Information of what is needed will be included in the notice of decision after the board acts on your application. Impact fees. There will be a public safety impact fee assessed on the net gain in building square footage. The existing structure has a footprint of plus or minus 1,723 square feet. The proposed structure is 3,750 square feet, a net gain of 2,207 square feet. Public saving, safety impact fee is assessed at $1.27 per square foot or a total of $2,574.29. That will be due prior to the closing of any building permits or the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The building footprint approved by the planning board changes, this information will be updated for the notice of decision. All right. I think that's everything.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Go enjoy the concert.
Good night.
Yeah.
They could all be that, something.
This is pretty clean. All right, next on the agenda. The planning board will be holding a public hearing on amendments to the rules and procedures. So I guess we'll open the public hearing for the amendment to rules and procedures at 7:53. 6:53, okay. I'm struggling here. All right. For purposes of amending the rules and procedures, since we amended pretty much the whole, the whole thing, I'm gonna have to read the whole thing into the record. All right, so at that point, after I'm done, we'll invite anyone from the public if they wish to comment. There is no, if there is no comment to be taken into account, then we'll close the public hearing and then, and then, and then book. If we decide to book. All right, so Chapter 2, Chapter 225 Town of Plastow Planning Board, Bylaws and Rules of Procedures, History, adopted by the Planning Board of the Town of Plastow, 65, 1996, amended in its entirety, 45226, January 2, 2019, October 7, 2020, June 1, 2022, May 15, 2024, and July 16, 2025. Subsequent amendments noted where applicable. General references, zoning ordinance, 220, 220, subdivision, site plan review regulations, Chapter 230, 225-1, authority and duties. These bylaws and rules of procedures, the rules of the Town of Plastow, New Hampshire, the Town, Planning Board, the Board, are adopted under the authority of New Hampshire Revised Statutes Annotated, RSA 676:1, as amended from time to time, and the responsibilities for the planning boards under the regulatory, nonregulatory authority of New Hampshire's RSA 673, 674, 155E, 230, 1:157-158, and 236: 13, Roman numeral 5, as amended from time to time. A, the Board shall review and approve or disapprove subdivision applications, RSA 67435. The Board shall amend and review its subdivision and site plan review regulations and procedures as needed by drafting proposals, holding public hearings, and adopting them by majority vote under RSA 675:6. B, the Board shall review and approve or disapprove site plans for expansion of use as well as for the development of tracks for nonresidential uses and for multifamily dwelling units other than one or two family dwellings under RSA 674:43. C, the Board shall review and approve or disapprove applications for conditional use permits as outlined in the zoning ordinance pursuant to RSA 674:21. The Board unless, D, the Board unless its responsibility has been otherwise delegated by the local legislative body to the zoning board of adjustment or the Board of Selectment, shall reserve as the regulator as defined in RSA 155-E:1 for earth excavations in accordance of RSA 155-E. E, the Board shall oversee any scenic roads as it relates to utilities and/or maintenance in accordance of RSA 231:157-158. F, the Board shall hold hearings on proposed local building codes, regulations, and amendments, and may also propose building code regulations for the approval by selectmen under RSA 674: 1. G, the Board shall have the authority to prepare, amend, and accept a master plan under RSA 674:2-4 and a capital improvement program under RSA 674-5-8. The Board shall have the authority to prepare amendments to the zoning ordinance for adoption by the town's legislative body under RSA 674:16. All proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance shall include recommended voters' guide languages, which shall be presented to the Board of Selectmen, and for those amendments that are chosen to be presented in summary form, a topical description of substance of the proposed amendment, which shall be provided to the town clerk for insertion to the official ballot. H, the Board upon request may advise the Board of Selectmen on matters within its jurisdiction as appropriate. I, the Board shall have authority to make investigations, maps, reports, and recommendations related to planning issues affecting the town. J, the Board shall exercise any authority or responsibility contemplated by state or local law. K, the Board shall pursuant to the direction of the Board of Selectmen represent the town before the Rockingham Regional Planning Commission. 225-2, purpose. This document establishes the rules governing Board functions and activities, including but not limited to its organization, conduct of meetings, including joint meetings, duties of officers and committees, communications, and conflicts of interest. B, each member and alternate shall have their own personal copy of these rules and become familiar with their content and are binding upon the members to act within them unless otherwise waived by the Board. C, a copy of these rules shall be on file for public inspection and to town offices and on the Board's website. 225-3, public hearings. A, a public hearing shall be held as required by New Hampshire RSA's 4.1, master plan adoption or amendments proposed under RSA 674:1. Two, subdivision and site plan review regulations proposed under RSA 674:35-37 and RSA 674:43-44. Three, zoning ordinances proposed under RSA 674:16. Four, building code proposed under RSA 674:51. Five, board review of subdivision or site plan proposal under RSA 674:43-44B. Six, board review of conditional use permit applications under RSA 674:21. Seven, revocation of recorded approval under RSA 674:4-A. B, notice of public hearings shall be given at least 10 calendar days prior to the date of hearing by publication in newspaper of general circulation. of hearing by publication in newspaper of general circulation and by posting in at least two public places. The 10, the 10 calendar days shall not include the day of posting or the day of the meeting. One, for hearings involving an application for subdivision or site plan review and for conditional use permits, notice forward to the applicant and a butler shall be given by verified mail at least 10 days prior to the meeting under RSA 676:4. Two, the full text of a notice for any public hearing shall not be included in the notice provided. The full text of a notice for any public hearing need not be included in the notice provided at adequate summary. An adequate summary is included in the notice and a location is specified when the entire proposal may be viewed by the public. C, the public hearing shall be conducted in the general manner described in 25-8, 25-4 General Provisions. These rules shall be adopted following a public hearing by the Board. The hearing shall be noticed by a legal notice published not less than 10 days prior to the hearing, and said notice shall contain a summary of the provisions herein, together with the notation that the full text is available upon request. The rules shall be effective upon adoption by a majority of the Board by signature and filed with the office of the town clerk. These rules may be amended and revised in the same manner as the initial adoption. Generally capitalized terms unless otherwise defined in these rules shall have the same meaning as contained in the zoning ordinance and/or the subdivision and site plan review regulations of the Town of Plastow. E, the Board may vote to waive any sections of these rules except those that are required by the New Hampshire law for good cause shown. The justification for such action shall be stated in the minutes. For the purpose of these rules and only to the extent permitted by RSAs, the Board may act, may act through the planning staff as herein defined. G, the Board shall not hear any matter regarding any property which is subject of current court action except it may consider any proposal which has been submitted as a settlement offer, offer for that action. H, the Board shall strive at least once annually, no later than October 31st, to meet with members of the zoning board and of adjustments, ZBA, and Conservation Commission. The activity of these boards is of interest in the planning or zoning, and exchange of data can eliminate potential gray areas and regulations. I, an annual organizational meeting shall be held at the first regular meeting after the town elections in early March, but no later than 30 days following the close of town annual meeting. The purpose of the annual meeting will be to elect officers to review the rules. 225.5, Members. The Board shall consist of a total of five members. Four of them shall be elected by the legislative body. The fifth member shall be a selectman designated by the Board of Selectmen to act as an ex officio member with the power to vote. Each newly elected or appointed member, including reelected and reappointed members, shall be sworn in and take an oath of office pursuant to RSA 42:1. B, the Board members shall acknowledge their responsibilities under the Town of Plastow Code of Ethics. C, the Board members shall acknowledge the Town of Plastow Conflict of Interest Ordinance. D, new members shall be provided with land use planning tools such as subdivision and site plan review regulations, a copy of the zoning ordinance, master plan, and other material. The planning staff and members of the Board are available to assist new members with document, introduction, and answers to questions, and identify training opportunities. Within 12 months of assuming office for the first time, any new member shall complete at least six hours of training as offered by New Hampshire State Agencies. Two hours of training, not six. At least, uh, within 12 months of assuming office for the first time. Oh, I'm reading the wrong spot. You're, you're right. Uh-huh. You're a little ahead of me. I was. Any new member shall complete at least six hours of training as offered by New Hampshire State Agencies. E, each member of the Board, including alternates, shall complete annually at least two hours of training as offered by New Hampshire State Agencies. F, all members of the Board shall be provided a town email address. The Board members shall use only their official email addresses for Board business. G, Terms of the Ex Officio Members. The Board of Selectmen shall determine the term of ex officio members. The Board of Selectmen may appoint an alternate for ex, for the ex officio member. H, Terms of Elected and Appointed Offices. One, the term of an elected office shall be three years. Appointment number and terms of alternate members shall be in accordance of RSA 673:6. Up to five alternates for elected members may be elected to the Board and shall serve for staggered terms of three years. Membership Vacancies. Vacancies shall be filled in accordance of RSA 673:12. Vacancies in the membership of the Board occurring other than through the expiration of term of office shall be filled as follows. A, for an elected member by appointment by the remaining Board members until the next regular municipal election, at which time successor shall be elected to either fill the unexpired term or start a new term, uh, start a new term as appropriate, I guess. B, for appointed ex officio or alternate member by the original appointing or designating authority for the unexpired term. J, Service of Other Boards. Board members may serve on any other board, other town board or commission, provided that such multiple memberships do not result in more than two board members, including alternates, serving on the same board or commission. Two, only one board member or alternate may serve on the Conservation Commission or on another land use board excluding the zoning board of adjustment. Three, no board member or alternate shall serve on the zoning, zoning board of adjustment and/or be an employee slash contractor of the Town of Plastow. K, Meeting Attendance. Board members, ex officio members, and alternates are expected to attend all meetings, however, in the event that they are unable to attend a meeting, the Chair, as herein defined, should be contacted in person or by phone prior to 3:30 PM of the day of the meeting so that sufficient coverage can be ensured. If connected to the answering system, members should leave their name and status of attendance so that the message can be retrieved in a timely manner. Two, any member not leaving such a message and does not attend a meeting shall be considered unexcused and shall be noted in the minutes. The absence of a board member for, from three unexcused consecutive meetings or from attendance at 75% of the regularly scheduled meetings in a calendar year without just cause will cause the Board to consider requesting the removal and replacement of that member. The Chair will have the authority to grant excused absences. Three, any, any ex officio member not leaving such a message and who does not attend a meeting shall be considered unexcused and it shall be noted in the minutes. The absence of an ex officio member for three unexcused consecutive meetings or from attendance at 75% of regularly scheduled board meetings in a calendar year without just cause will cause the Board to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they address the attendance record of the ex officio member. The Chair will have the authority to grant unexcused absences, grant excused absences. L, Removal and Resignation of Members. One, removal of members will be in accordance of RSA 673:13. The Board of Selectmen may, at the request of the Board, hold a public meeting to remove a member or an alternate member from service on the Board upon written findings of inefficiently neglect of duty or malfeasance in office. A written statement shall be filed with the town clerk, giving reasons for such removal. Two, members who choose to resign either as a member, an officer, and/or member of a subcommittee shall submit their resignation in writing to a quorum of the Board. Such resignation shall be effective the date the resignation is received by the Board. L, Election of Officers. The officers of the Board shall be elected annually at the meeting, at the first meeting after the annual town election by a majority vote of the Board. If requested by a majority of those present, voting shall be by written ballot. The Board shall elect a Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary from the elected membership and may create other officers as it deems necessary. An ex officio member of the Board shall not serve as Chair. Any officer shall be eligible for reelection. M, Planning Staff, Finances, and Board Counsel. One, the Board in consultation of the Town Manager shall appoint in accordance of RSA 673:13, non-member staff, planning staff, from the available town administrative personnel as deemed necessary to carry out all administrative work related to the proper and efficient implementation of Board duties and obligations. Two, the Board in its sole discretion may define the responsibilities of any non-member planning staff as it relates to the planning Board duties and obligations only. Three, all personnel deemed necessary by the Board to be considered planning staff shall be either contractors or town employees who are part of the town's personnel plan that defines supervisory roles, wages, benefits, hours, employment, and all of their aspects of an employee's job in accordance of RSA 37:6. Four, the Board has no statutory authority to enforce and/or interpret zoning ordinances. Planning staff cannot also hold any of the following so-called land use board enforcement positions: building inspector, code enforcement officer, zoning officer, and/or zoning official, nor any other position within the town tasked with enforcing and/or interpreting either the building code and/or zoning ordinances. This provision shall not prevent planning staff from providing administrative assistance to other land use boards or other town departments. Five, within the limits of funding made available for its use by the town meeting, and in accordance of RSA 673:16, the Board may also contract of planners, engineers, architects, and other such consultants for such services as may, may require. Appointments shall be made by majority vote of the members present at any regular or special meetings which a quorum has been established. The Chair may be authorized to sign contracts for employing personnel and contracting for consulting services as approved by the Board. The Chair may authorize expenditure of funds within the town meeting approved budget of the Board. The Board shall prepare its recommended annual appropriations on the gross basis as required by RSA, RSA 32:5, Roman numeral 3, and approve, and approve its annual budget prior to submittal, submittal of the budget to the Board of Selectmen. Now, I'm getting a little shaky here. Six, the Board in consultation with the Board of Selectmen shall engage counsel of sufficient experience in municipal affairs and New Hampshire land use to provide its advice and represent its interests in front of the town, other town boards, and in New Hampshire courts. Board Counsel shall not represent the town, another land use board, and/or zoning board of adjustment. O, Committee and Commission Memberships. One, the Board shall make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen of two commissioners and an alternate to serve on the Rockingham Planning Commission, RPC, in accordance of RSA 36:46-3, Roman numeral 3. Two, the Board shall make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for one person to represent the town as a member of the RPC's Transportation Advisory Committee, TAC, to RPC's Metropolitan Policy Committee, MPC. TAC members serve two, serve terms as defined by the RPC and may be any resident of the town. Three, the Board shall appoint a member and an alternate member to serve on the Capital Improvements Program Committee in addition to the Chair or the Chair's designee. The Chair or the Chair's designee shall serve as the Chair of the CIP Committee. A board member or alternate member may also serve on the CIP Committee as either a member or an alternate. Four, the Board from time to time may create additional subcommittees to work on board projects such as zoning ordinances, updates, master plan, subdivision, site plan review regulation updates, and any other projects the Board may authorize. All board subcommittees are advisory only and bound by the same open process that the Board follows, with any decisions being made by the Board itself.
Richard, do you want me to take over for a little bit?
Why don't you, please? Kind of getting rough here. Twist his arm.
Thank you. Section 225-6, Duties of the Board Officers. A, Chair of the Board. Chair shall preside over all meetings and hearings, set the agendas with input from the planning staff, supervise the preparation of an annual report, appoint such committees as directed by the Board, affix his or her signature in the name of the Board, speak for, or appoint a designee to speak for the Board, and perform other duties customary to the Office. B, Vice Chair of the Board. The Vice Chair shall preside over all meetings in the absence of the Chair and shall have the full powers of the Chair on matters that come before the Board in the absence of the Chair. C, Secretary of the Board. Secretary shall review all the Board minutes prior to submission to the Board, act as the Board scribe in preparing drafts of Board correspondence, rules and regulations, and assist board subcommittees in preparation of their reports to the Board. In the absence or unavailability of the Chair and the Vice Chair, the Secretary shall exercise the duties of the Chair. D, Recording Secretary. Ensure a record of all meetings of the Board takes place and a draft made available to the planning staff in timely fashion such that compliance with RSA 91A can be maintained. The Recording Secretary shall be a member of the planning staff. E, in the absence or unavailability of the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, the Board members present shall present, shall select a Board member other than the ex officio member or their alternate to exercise duties of the Chair. Section 225-7, Application Procedures and Notices. All applications for approval, A, all applications for approval shall be noticed and held in accordance with Article 5 of the subdivision and site plan review regulations and RSA 674:35 through 44, 675:7, and 676:4. B, applications to be placed on and engender for public hearing must be received by the planning staff at least 21 days, not including Sundays and legal holidays, prior to the public hearing as provided in RSA 676:41B. C, the Board will either accept jurisdiction over an application or deny it if incomplete under the Board's regulations. One, each application for a hearing before the Board shall be made on forms provided by the town and shall be presented to planning staff or their assigns, who shall date stamp the application with the date of the submittal. Application, two, applications shall meet the specifications of all applicable town ordinances and the provisions of the subdivision and site plan review regulations. Three, all forms and revisions prescribed shall be adopted by resolution of the Board and shall become part of these rules. Four, the application form shall be reviewed annually to see if update is required based on New Hampshire RSA changes, case law, and town land use ordinances. Section 225-8, Meetings. A, all meetings shall be held in full compliance with the provisions of the state's right-to-know law, the ordinances and regulations of the town, and these rules. Any non-public meetings shall be held in strict accordance with RSA 91-A. B, agendas shall be prepared for every meeting of the Board. Preparation of agendas are the authority of the Board. Administrative responsibilities for preparation of the agenda are delegated to the Chair, who shall have final approval of content. Planning staff shall assist the Chair in preparation and posting of agendas. C, packets containing agendas and supporting correspondence shall be prepared by the planning staff and shall be provided to the Board seven days prior to the meeting. Submissions to be included in the packets must be approved, must be provided to the planning staff at least 14 days prior to the meeting. D, Regular Meetings. Regular meetings shall be held at the Plastow Town Hall at 6:30 PM on the first and third Wednesdays of each month. When possible, agendas should be set so that the meetings can be adjourned no later than 9:30 PM. E, Workshop Meetings. One, these meetings are typically held on the first Wednesday of each month. Two, these meetings shall be set aside for training, master plan updates, and discussion, subdivision and site plan review regulation updates, zoning ordinance updates, and rules updates. They, they may also include deliberations on a public hearing that has been closed. Typically, public hearings are not scheduled during workshop meetings, however, the Chair may continue previously scheduled public hearing to a workshop meeting with the consensus of the Board. Four, no less, no less frequently than quarterly, the town's building inspector and code enforcement officer shall attend a workshop meeting to update the Board on matters that may impact town planning and land use. F, Public Hearing Meetings. Number one, these meetings are typically held on the third Wednesday of each month. Two, when necessary to continue a public hearing, the Chair shall continue the hearing to the third Wednesday of the following month unless additional time is deemed necessary by the Board and applicant. Three, under extenuating circumstances, the Chair may continue the public hearing to the first Wednesday of the following month with the consensus of the Board. Number four, New Hampshire RSA 676:4C1 requires that the Board must determine whether an application is complete within 30 days from the date the application was delivered to the Board. For meetings with very long agendas, the Chair may announce the beginning of the meeting that no public hearings will be started after 9:00 PM. Five, the normal procedure for the Board is to make the determination of whether or not an application is complete, and if so, immediately open the public hearing for the application. With a very long agenda, this could result in cases where not all of the applications would be heard for a determination of completeness, and a continuation of the hearing would result in failure. in favor of the board to meet the 30-day criteria. In these cases, if the chair determines at 8:00 p.m. that not all the applications will be heard before 9:00 p.m., the chair may change the order of the agenda such that a determination of completeness would be made for all applications before the board opening any of the public hearings. Number six, in cases where the chair has determined that a change in the order of the agenda is appropriate, and after all the applications have been reviewed for completeness, the chair shall then open the next scheduled public hearing in the order presented in the agenda. Number seven, if a public hearing has begun before 9:00 p.m. and there is still active discussion after 9:00 p.m., the chair may continue the public hearing to a time and date certain with the consensus of the board and the applicant. This continuation shall be done on a case-by-case basis. Number eight, if there are more hearings on the agenda that have not yet been opened and it is after 9:00 p.m., the chair shall open each of the hearings, and if the application is deemed complete, immediately continue to a hearing, the hearing to a time and date certain. G, special meetings may be called by the chair or the chair's absence by the vice chair or at the request of three members of the board. Provided, notice is given to each member at least 48 hours prior to the time of such meetings and is posted in two appropriate public places at least 24 hours prior to such meetings, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. H, non-public sessions shall be held in strict conformance with RSA 91-A. I, the chair may cancel a meeting if an unusual circumstances warrant a cancellation. Reasonable effort shall be made to post a notice of the cancellation in two public places, including or in addition to the town hall. J, in accordance with RSA 673:10, Roman numeral three, a majority of the membership of the board shall constitute a quorum and shall include alternates sitting in the place of regular members. If a quorum cannot be established, the meeting cannot be held. K, whenever a regular member is absent, the chair shall designate an alternate if one is present to act in the absent member's place. Only the ex officio alternate designated by the board of selectmen may serve in place of the ex officio member. Alternates shall have all the powers and duties of regular members regarding any matter under consideration on which the regular member is unable to act. L, disqualification of a member. No member of the board shall participate in deciding or shall sit upon the hearing of any question which the board is to decide in a judicial capacity. If that member has a direct, personal, or pecuniary interest in the outcome which differs from the interests of other citizens, or if that member would be disqualified for any cause to act as a juror upon the trial of the same matter in any action of law. The member shall disqualify himself/herself pursuant to RSA 673:14 and shall notify the chair as soon as possible in order to facilitate his/her replacement by an alternate. The chair or the member who has disqualified himself/herself shall announce the disqualification before discussion or public hearing on the question being considered takes place, or as soon as the member disqualifying himself/herself discovers such reason for disqualification. The disqualified member shall leave the board table during all deliberations and public hearings on the matter. Two, when uncertainty arises as to the application of subsection 1 above, the board, upon the request of that member or any other member of the board, vote on the question of whether the member should be disqualified. Such requests shall be made prior to or at the commencement of a public hearing or an action resulting in a board decision on the matter. The vote shall be made a matter of record, shall be advisory in nature, and shall not be requested by persons other than board members. Three, the chair shall designate an alternate if one is present to take the place of a member who has disqualified himself/herself from deliberations on a matter before the board. M, personal electronic devices at meetings. One, use of electronic devices is subject to the right-to-know laws as described in RSA 91-A. Therefore, use of any personal electronic devices during board meetings is prohibited. Exception, the recording secretary may use an electronic device to record the meeting. Two, all personal electronic devices will be placed in silent mode during board meetings except if the chair or planning staff need to receive email or calls from others or the public during hearings. Three, in the event that a member needs to handle an emergency situation, they may excuse themselves from the table to do so. N, voting. The board's general voting procedures are as follows. One, including the chair, only seated members, not alternates, may make a motion. Any such motion duly seconded may be discussed by the board prior to a vote on such motion being taken. Alternates may only make a motion when having first been seated by the chair in place of an absent or otherwise disqualified member. Two, after all discussion of the motion by board members has been completed, the chair will call for a vote on the motion by the board. If the vote is not unanimous, the minutes of the meeting shall indicate members in favor, opposed, or abstaining by name. Three, a motion duly seconded shall be passed by a majority of members present and voting in the affirmative. An affirmative vote of a majority of members voting on a motion shall be sufficient for the adoption of the motion. Members of the board present may be counted to determine whether a quorum is present, although they may abstain from voting affirmatively or negatively. Persons abstaining shall not be considered members voting on the motion and will have no impact on determining whether a motion has been adopted or defeated. A tie vote, number four, a tie vote between members voting in favor and in opposition represents only a failed motion, and no board action has commenced until a motion passes by majority vote. If the board is unable to pass a motion to act on the application of matter, the board may vote to continue the item to its next scheduled meeting. Number five, a board member should only abstain from voting in circumstances of financial interest in a specific outcome the board has jurisdiction over, prejudice, or a conflict of interest. In these instances, recusal from consideration of the subject matter entirely is more appropriate per RSA 673:14. This is 5A. Board members are elected by the local legislative body to make decisions, and they are expected to do so regardless of the difficulty of the decision. If a board member feels like they cannot decide, rather than abstaining from a vote, the board member should make a motion to continue the deliberations to a date certain and work to allow for further discussion and submission of information so that a vote can be made with confidence at the subsequent meeting-public hearings. B, while not necessary, abstentions and votes for approval of minutes and on a vote for oneself during the annual meeting of election of offices are permissible. Section 225-9, meeting procedures. Order of Business. A, Order of Business. One, unless modified by a vote, the board regularly follows the following order of business. A, call to order by chair. B, roll call and confirmation of quorum. C, appointment of alternates. D, minutes of previous meetings and vote to accept, reject, or modify by board. E, scheduled hearings on subdivision/site plans, conditional use permits, amendment and proposals. F, scheduled discussions with the board. G, reading of communications directed to or from the board. H, report of subcommittees. I, consideration of old business. J, consideration of new business. K, other business. L, adjournment by the chair. Number two, the board may vote at a regular meeting to change the above order to better accommodate the public or the board. The chair may change the order of public hearings at his discretion. B, all voting, whether public session or non-public session, shall be conducted in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 91-A. C, all procedures for subdivision and site plan approval shall take place as defined in subdivision and site plan review regulations. D, the conduct of a public hearing shall be governed by the following rules. One, all matters requiring a public hearing will be placed on the agenda in the order they are received by the chair or planning staff. The date received shall be the date when the signed form was submitted to the chair or planning staff. Two, any public matters that are continued from a previous meeting shall be first on the agenda in the same order as before. Three, upon receipt of application by the board, no further material may be added to the file except at a public meeting or hearing of the board where the application is posted to be heard. Four, if the board, based on its subdivision and site plan review regulations governing completeness, determines that it does not have sufficient information to proceed with consideration and to make an informed decision, the application shall be voted incomplete and not be accepted by the board. The board will provide the applicant with the written reason for rejection, and the rejected application will be kept in a separate file in the planning department for no more than one year unless otherwise directed by the board. Five, the chair shall enforce such order and decorum as may be necessary for the sufficient conduct of the board's business guided by a desire to maximize public import on matters before the board. The chair shall regulate discussion among board members but refrain from participating in the debate. The chair's viewpoints may be expressed but only after other members of the board have spoken. If the chair wishes to participate in a specific discussion, he or she should hand the gavel to the vice chair and participate as a regular member. However, the chair may vote on issues before the board. Six, the chair shall establish such rules of parliamentary procedures as are necessary subject to the provision that the chair may be overruled by a majority of the board. Seven, when desired by the board, the town's consultant planner or consultant engineer shall present the plans to the planning board for review. At the option of the board, the applicant or the applicant agent may be allowed to present the plans. The chair shall open the public hearing, identify the applicant or agent seeking board approval, or the nature of an amendment to current regulations being proposed. The chair or anyone else so designated by the chair may present a report on the application proposal or discussion. Ten, the applicant or agent or sponsor of an amendment shall be called upon to present the proposal. At the completion of the applicant or applicant's agent's presentation, the chair will ask the board members if they have questions, concerns, or comments about the application or proposal being presented. Eleven, after the board members have asked their questions and made their comments and concerns known to the applicant or the applicant's agent, the chair may read any letters submitted regarding the specific application or proposal. Letters will only be read when the sender has been properly identified in the letter. The letter must contain a name and address along with a statement to indicate whether the sender is a party to the matter or an agent or counsel to a party of the matter. Twelve, the chair may read all appropriate correspondence and then ask members of the public for their questions, concerns, and comments. Everyone present will have an opportunity to speak. Thirteen, persons who speak on an application shall be required to state their name and address and indicate whether they are party to the matter or an agent or counsel to a party to the matter. Fourteen, board members and members of the public shall be recognized by the chair before speaking on the plan. Members of the public shall address all comments and questions through the chair. All members of the board and the public are encouraged to submit testimony, ask questions, and comment on applications. However, comments are encouraged to be concise and submitted in writing for the record. The board shall have the authority to limit public comment and testimony to five minutes per person when in the board's opinion testimony being offered is redundant or not relevant to the application or issue before the board. Fifteen, the chair shall have the discretion to cut off the discussion at any point during the hearing. Should any member wish the discussion to continue, the chair shall call for a vote of the board, and the majority opinion will carry. Sixteen, the chair shall indicate at the end of the hearing whether the hearing is closed or continued. Closure or continuation shall depend on whether there is a need for submission of additional material or information for the correction of noted deficiencies. In the case of a continuation, additional notice shall not be required if the date, time, and place of the continuation is announced at the time of the continuation. E, joint meetings. Pursuant to RSA 676-2, the board may hold joint meetings and hearings with another land use board and/or the Conservation Commission. Two, a quorum of the membership of each body shall be required in order to conduct a joint meeting. Three, joint meetings may be held at any time when called jointly by the chairs of two land use boards, subject to appropriate legal notice. Four, a joint public hearing must be a formal public hearing when the subject matter is within the responsibility of the boards convened. Five, the chair shall chair all joint meetings and public hearings when the subject matter involves the board. Six, rules of procedure for joint land use board meetings shall be the same as those followed regularly by the board with the following exception regarding the order of business. A, call to order by the chair. B, introduction of members of each board by their respective chairs. C, explanation by board chair for joint meeting/hearing. D, in the case of a public hearing relative to a requested permit or application for a plat approval or both, presentation by the applicant of the proposal under consideration. E, those in support of the application will be allowed to speak. F, those in opposition of the application will be allowed to speak. G, in the case of a joint hearing with the ZBA, the ZBA will make its decision prior to the board. Seven, nothing in this section shall prevent the board from meeting with other municipal entities, including the Board of Selectmen, School Board, Conservation Committee, and any others, as the board may deem appropriate. Such meetings shall be conducted according to procedures determined by mutual agreement between the boards. F, meetings with other municipalities. The board may meet with boards and/or representatives of other municipalities or other public agencies at such locations and according to such terms as may be mutually agreeable and convenient.
Do I have to pick up there? All right. Meeting, okay. 225-10, electronic or multimedia presentations. A, the planning board encourages and, in some cases, requires applicants to provide their materials in electronic format, PDF. The purpose of this is twofold, to publish application materials on the board's website for public review and to project the application materials on a screen in the hearing room so that it can be more easily seen by board members and the public. Applicants for subdivision or site plan approval must submit their PDF materials at the same time as their paper applications. B, in addition, applicants are allowed to submit modified plans as PowerPoint, PDF, or multimedia presentations in a format that is easier to display or view, for example, colored site plans and renderings. Any such presentations must be submitted to planning staff by the close of business on the day preceding the public hearing. C, members of the public may use PowerPoint, PDF, or multimedia presentations in a public hearing during the second round of public comment, subject to the five-minute time limit specified above. Any such presentation must be submitted to the planning department by the close of business on the day preceding the public hearing, as is required of the applicant. D, other presentation formats may be permitted during a public hearing subject to the prior approval by board chair. 225-11, decisions. A, the board shall render a decision within 65 days of the date of acceptance of a completed application, subject to extension or waiver as provided under RSA 676:4, Section I, Subsection C1. B, the board shall decide to either approve conditionally or approve or disapprove an application pursuant to RSA 676:3. Board consideration is not final until one of these decisions has been reached. C, the board shall issue a written letter of decision to the applicant, including specific findings of fact conforming with the board's decision and signed by the chair pursuant to RSA 676. to RSA 676:3. D, notice of decision shall be made available for public inspection in the town offices consistent with specifications of RSA 676:3. E, each notice of decision shall include information about the right to appeal decisions of the board in accordance with RSA 676:5-Roman numeral 3 or RSA 677:15 as appropriate. F, if the board believes it does not have sufficient information to proceed with consideration of an application, including the completion of required application requirements such that the board is unable to make an informed decision, or if it is determined that the application does not comply with the zoning ordinance, the application may be rejected by a majority vote of the voting members. The board will provide the applicant with the board's written reason for rejection in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 676:3. 225-12, reconsiderations. A, the board may reconsider any decision that is made regarding an application for good cause, provided it is within the statutory appeal period of 30 days. This may be done by a member who voted on the prevailing side through a motion that specifies the reason for reconsideration. Upon successful passage of the motion, the board shall schedule a public hearing with notice as provided in RSA 676:4, Section I, Roman numeral 1, Section D, where the board shall consider the issue that led to the reconsideration decision. If an alternate was seated for an application... An alternate was seated for an application decision but not seated at the next meeting, they may request that the member is willing to make a motion for reconsideration for good cause. B, the board may reconsider any other decision for good cause at the request of a member who voted on the prevailing side through a motion. 225-13, appeals. A, any decision of the board in the exercise of subdivision or site plan reviews that involves a determination based upon the terms of the zoning ordinance or upon any construction, interpretation, or application of the zoning ordinance may be appealed to the ZBA within 30 days in accordance of RSA 676:5-Roman numeral 3. B, all other appeals of board decisions shall follow the process outlined in RSA 677:15 and be made to the Superior Court. C, appeals of the board's decision on conditional use permits can only be made to the Superior Court in accordance of RSA 674:21. 225-14, communications. A, the purpose of this policy is to ensure that all board members are aware of board communication that may go public before it actually does. The intent of this policy is to allow each board member to become aware of, educate themselves on all matters pertaining to the board business before they are approached or said on said matters by members of the public or media. All correspondence shall be directed to the planning board, attention of the chair, 145 Main Street, Plastow, New Hampshire, 03865. B, all communication with any member of the public, anyone other than the planning board members, including applicants or potential applicants. Following is an abbreviated list of communication that will be affected by this policy. Letters to applicants, subdivision and site plan reviews, conceptual reviews, proposed changes to bylaws, zoning ordinances, rules of procedures and process, master plan, internal planning board memos, letters of correspondence from any of the following sources. Board of Selectmen, town engineers, town attorneys, RPC, New Hampshire Municipal Association, town building inspector, code enforcement officer, zoning officer, and other town departments. C, the chair shall sign all approved subdivision site plans or amended plans on a media that is suitable for recording at the Rockingham Counting Registry of Deeds. Plans that were conditionally approved at a public hearing must have all conditions met before the plans will be signed. The chair shall sign all notices of decisions. D, press releases issued shall correspond with the recorded minutes of the board meetings and shall be given to the press by the chair or planning staff at the direction of the chair. All such releases must conform to any policies established by the town. E, only the chair or in the absence of the chair, the vice chair shall communicate with board council unless the chair or vice chair specifically directs another board member, including alternates, to communicate with board council. Planning staff shall not communicate with the board council unless specifically directed to by the chair or vice chair. Any meetings or correspondence such as faxes, letters, faxes, emails, or phone calls with the board council, as they pertain to any board business, shall be followed up with a letter to the board immediately after said meetings or correspondence takes place. This letter or memo is required in order to comply with the communications policies set forth above. All board members shall be provided with this letter as soon as humanly possible. The only exception to this rule will be any legal correspondence on or pertaining to one of the board members in which the attorney-client privilege has been invoked. F, initial communication from an applicant to the board must first go through planning staff and will then move to the town planner or circuit rider planner, if such position is present, and from there to the chair. Whenever possible, issues shall be resolved at the level closest to the applicant, i.e. by the planning staff, then the circuit rider, town planner, and finally if the chair, only when necessary. With the exception of legal meetings, individual board members shall not be engaged in advising applicants outside of the chain of communications outlined in this section, including board officers such as the chair, vice chair, and secretary. G, the intent of this policy is to allow all board members to be up to date with information relative to their position on the board. This is crucial in order to maintain credibility as a board, as a board member. However, it may not be possible to strictly adhere to the policy at all times. It is therefore expected that the chair and all members will make their best effort to adhere to the policy and/or notify all board members of all said communication as soon as humanly possible. H, the chair or planning staff shall prepare for review any communication mentioned above in the section B above. The chair, secretary, or planning staff shall disseminate said communication to all board members for review during or in lieu of a regularly scheduled board meeting, prior to any disclosure to outside members that are public. This should be done as early as possible after receiving any such communication. Note, this review can be accomplished by either presenting the communication to all board members via a board meeting or by distribution to each board member via mail, email, fax, or hand delivery. If the communication is a time-sensitive issue, the proper review cannot be held during a regular... Let me read that again. If the communication is a time-sensitive issue and proper review cannot be held during a regular or special board meeting, the chair, secretary, or planning staff shall at least obtain a verbal consent from a majority of the board members prior to disseminating said communication to the public. 225-15, site walks. A site walk is defined as a visit by the board or a member of the board to a location which is the subject of an application before the board, where the visit is in company of the owner, applicant, their agents, or employees, and involves going onto the property or visiting areas which are not customarily available for public inspection. This does not include a view of a site from adjoining public highways or other observations that can be made without entering on the property. B, when the board deems it necessary for the adequate consideration of an application, the board shall request the applicant to allow a site walk by the board. C, when the board schedules a site walk for board membership, it shall be posted as a meeting of the board in accordance of RSA 91-A. D, site walks are public meetings of the board, and as such, members of the board are allowed to attend. The chair has the authority to maintain decorum and order on a site walk just as any other meeting of the board. E, the practice of an applicant directly contacting a member to invite that member to visit a property without prior chair or planning staff notice shall be discouraged as an inappropriate course of conduct. F, when the board meets to consider an application, the board and/or individual members of the board shall disclose whether they have conducted a site walk on the location under consideration. G, minutes of site walks shall be kept only if there is a quorum of the board conducting the site walk. Minutes shall be in accordance with RSA 91-A. H, the board should refrain from making decisions on an application while on a site walk. Any comments, motions, or direction to any applicant should be made at the public hearing. The remainder of this page is left intentionally blank. All right, I'll just read the last. In accordance with New Hampshire RSA 676:1, method adopting rules of procedures 675:6 and 675:7, the Plastow Planning Board, having held a duly noticed public meeting on July 16, 2025... We have not done it yet, but hereby adopts and certifies the Town of Plastow Planning Board bylaws and rules and procedures. That's just sort of an endorsement page at the end. All right. Read the rules and procedures. What's that?
Just one quick thing. Back on page three, I think you misspoke on RSA. I'm pretty sure I heard the wrong number. I just want to make record to correct it if it was indeed wrong. Number seven, it says revocation of recorded approval under RSA 676:4A. I heard 674. Just make a record, just to clarify.
All right, so.
It's, you know, I heard four.
Dooley read into the record.
Just so it's, you know, it's in there. Any input or...
The one thing, I have page four, under members. We got F, we have all members of the board shall be provided a town email address.
I was going to ask about that.
I don't think this board has the discretion to do that. That would come from the town manager or the selectman.
Okay. Well, first of all, it doesn't, it's in our rules of procedure, the planning board. The Board of Selectmen or the... We're not obligating, we're only obligating the planning.
Just want to make sure we know that.
Yeah, well, it's up to the... If this is dependent upon another board or another authority, then it is, you know. We can't bind the other authority through the planning.
Right, no, Jack, I just need to make sure that's out there. So we're aware that our rules and procedures don't bind.
Instead of shall, may. It changes, it may be provided.
That's not a big deal.
It's not a big deal, but it's not a, it will happen, it may happen.
It should happen. Should we say should be? My personal emails, my personal email account gets bombarded.
Yeah, I know what I used to do, when I used to run baseball leagues and stuff like that, I would go into Gmail, set up just a separate account, and that's the only thing that went to it. Yep, so we'd keep everything separate.
Well, just in terms of a best practice, I know that our legal counsel, you know, kind of, best practice would be to have a dedicated email.
And I understand that, and I respect that.
Do we want to make, are we looking to make a change, or are we just, are we willing to just say that our rules and procedures are not binding on another board or part of the municipality? You just have a...
I mean, they're clearly not.
Yeah, right. Yeah, because there's a couple of the same thing, like on page six, right at the bottom too. We get the board, and its sole discretion may define the responsibility of any non-member planning staff as it relates to the planning board duties and obligations only. As we know, the town manager, everyone reports to the town manager.
Yeah, but this...
He's in charge of all the staff.
This comes right out of the RSA. We're responsible for defining our staff, and it also says consultation with the town manager shall appoint.
Okay, as long as we know that.
Yeah. We're just defining the responsibility.
I just want to make sure we have it.
And, you know, when you follow, is all personnel deemed necessary have to be members of the employee, so, you know, it's not like the planning board can go out and start employing its own people.
Right, right, no, just got to make sure we get it out there. I'd rather have it clear than not clear.
No, that's why in the front, it's, you know, consultant with the, you know, consultation with the town manager.
Yeah, then you have the next one on page seven, like under five. You get the one sentence, the chair may be authorized to sign contracts for employing personnel and contracting for consulting services as approved by the board.
That's, that's right out of RSA.
Just going to make sure, obviously, the chair may authorize expenditure of funds within the town meeting approved budget of the board. As we all know from the other night, sometimes that can change a little bit, right?
Right, but in terms of like, you know, what's going to happen, you know, if there is a budget item.
I'm just trying to get everything out there.
No, no, it's, it's fine, Bill, I don't have, but I'm just telling you, this language is verbatim from RSA.
As we found, you know, we had the other night, as we're doing with a lot of different departments.
Well, you, but the Board of Selectmen have their own responsibilities with respect to the budget. The planning board has its own responsibilities with respect to how it conducts its affairs.
Right.
This only relates to our affairs.
I'm just trying to make sure.
Yep.
Case there's any questions anywhere. Then the other thing I had on eight, under duties of the board officers, E, you got, you know, in the absence, it says in the unavailability of the chair, vice chair, and secretary, the board members present, shall, or select a board member other than the ex-official member or their alternate to exercise the duties of the chair. Where I have the issue with that, the only place where it says the ex-official can't hold is the chair, but the ex-official could be the vice chair.
But then if you're the vice chair, which is fine, if we want to clarify it in here, but if you're the vice chair and then you have to sit as the chair, you couldn't be the chair.
I think from what the way it's been, because I've actually chaired meetings here before.
I was at a meeting where you chaired. I just, I don't know if that's an absolute, that the ex-official member can't be a chair in any...
I think the way it was always explained to me, why I was able to do it, and it could be right, could be wrong, we can find out, is that the ex-official can chair the meeting, he's just not obviously a permanent chair.
Well, that makes sense.
And you could never be the chair. To be honest with you, I don't know why the ex-official would even want to be the vice chair. That's my opinion.
It's a very glamorous position.
You know, so that's the one thing there, I don't know how we want to address that.
I think it just adds clarity, you know, he did look at all this, so.
Yeah, because that's, that was the one thing I noticed there, because like I said, I know I've done the chair before, and I was told if I wanted to, I could have went for the vice chair, I'm like, that's, trust me, I don't want that.
Yeah, yeah, which I don't think, again, I think you, I think the only duty the ex-official can't hold is the chair's duty.
Right. So, I mean, you could run a meeting, and that's all you're really doing is running a meeting. And I agree, though, it should go down the line of, it should go chair, vice chair, secretary, and if another member wants it, they could certainly have it over the ex-official, that wouldn't bother them, I mean.
But you're right, is, if you're sitting as, if you're, if you're sitting as the vice chair, what do you do?
That's what I'm saying. What is the scenario you're talking about? I mean, it's...
Well, the scenario is the ex-official, the chair's gone.
Yeah, the chair's not here. So someone has to run the meeting.
Okay.
And so if the ex-official's the vice chair, he runs the meeting. He doesn't perform any of the other duties of the chair, signing anything or anything like that. Like the ex-official doesn't have that power to sign, like, you know how you sign the bylaws and stuff? He wouldn't have any of that, would just be to run the meeting.
Well, the question is whether the barring of the ex-official for serving as the chair bars, is a complete bar.
But there are some cases, you could have one certain meeting where to run the meeting, the ex-official might be the best person to run it because the chair and the vice chair and the secretary aren't here.
No, I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to the notion of it, I just, I just think the bar is absolute. I just don't think the ex-official member in any capacity can have any function as a chair, any of the duties, even if it's narrowly constrained. I think the RSA bars it, but I'm not a lawyer.
Well, I mean, but they can run a meeting. I mean, you know, just, because if we take the, if we take the specific instance of, let's say, you have a voting, you know, let's say we have our, you know, after March, you know, that organizational meeting, your term is ended, so you're sort of meeting as a board, and whoever's running the board is sort of running the board in the capacity of running the meeting. But you're not, you're not signing or, you're not the chair.
Yeah, because what could possibly happen, you could have, the chair could be out, not saying it would happen, because this board's very good about showing up in attendance.
No, no.
The chair could be out, the vice chair could be out, the secretary could be out, and now you're just stuck with the, it could just be the ex-official and alternates. So who should really run the meeting? So who should really run the meeting? And I think it's just limited that you run the meeting, and that's it, you're not signing anything.
Is that what this is saying, though? I mean, it's not, you're just saying that you can't hold.
No, it's a broad, it's a broad thing, you can't exercise the duties of the chair, and if you start going up, the chair shall preside over all meetings, you know? That's the, it's, it's, it's broad, I mean, the language here is, is broad and absolute. It says, no. You know, you know, to me, I don't think it's a bad question to ask.
Legal?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is our chance to get.
Well, he did look at it, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I want to go back to the planning staff, finances, and board, the board in consultation with the town manager in one, can we put that down in two? Or is that absolute in the law as well?
It's, it's the responsibility of the planning, I mean, if you go look at the RSA, we define the, the role and responsibilities of the staff of the planning. Now, there's two things that, there's two things that, at play here is, there's planning staff, and there's staff of the planning, you know? It can be the same person, often towns it is, but planning staff is, is a defined thing for the plant, planning board staff, if you will, is, is, is reports, not reports the board, but takes, takes direction from the board. Planning, planning department staff, that's town manager.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got clarity on that now.
Yeah, they're like, you, 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 you know, they're, if we had a full-time planning department, which we used to have, that staff occupied two, two duties. The planner reported to the town manager, the planning staff actually reported to the town planner, and then had some responsibility, particularly with site plan applications, that comes up through the planning board, you know? And then typically, they, they do other things and support other, other activities.
So just a clarification on that, and then I just, for my own clarification, just to make sure I understand it right, is on page nine, under meeting C. It says, we're going, so that means these packets here, what this says is we should have them a week in advance. And then that, so that would mean, everything would have to be, to the planning staff, agenda and everything, four days, 14 days in advance for us to get packets. That means the minutes and everything would have to be 14 days in advance of our next meeting, to the planning staff, and then we'd have the packet seven days. Is that what that's saying?
Yeah, I, I, I think as long as, is, is the submissions are more talking about external submissions, you know? As far as our minutes, if the minutes came in at day eight and we get it at day seven, I don't, that's not what this is saying.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, this is.
That's one of those, if you go absolutely.
This is going, this, this is more external submissions.
So could we put ex, external submission packets?
Yeah, that's not a problem.
So that it, there's clarity on that?
Yeah, because otherwise you could read that and say the agenda has to be there two weeks in advance, minutes and submissions.
That means you'd have to go home tonight, shall we, and get the minutes out before midnight?
Well, something like submissions from applicants.
Mm-hmm, applicant submissions or something.
That can do, but that's what it meant.
That was what I had. Another silence outside.
Yeah, no kidding, huh?
I mean, I picked up on a bunch as I was reading, I picked up on a bunch of little typos that we can fix, like a comma here and stuff.
All right, just from a mechanics point of view, I mean, we're, we can make, because it's a public hearing, we can make changes and such.
Right.
You know, so do we continue the public hearing to the next?
The next meeting, yes.
Yeah.
And I think it should be a pretty quick thing at that point, right? Clarification on that one.
Right, so the, the clarification coming from, well, we have from page nine, looking for maybe some sort of clarification of what we mean by packets, you know, applicant submissions.
Yeah.
Two 25 dash six, duties of the board and officers, section E.
Right.
Just going to ask legal, like, where is it?
Yeah, and I, and I'll fix.
Distinction as running a meeting as opposed to assuming the role of chair.
Yeah, because I didn't circle, but I know earlier it said here in it that the ex officio couldn't be the chair.
Yes.
Right, and then, so that means you could hold every other position.
Well, that's, that's what the RSA says.
Right.
It just, it just focuses on the chair.
Yeah.
Doesn't say anything about anything else.
Right. And like I said, I don't know why the ex officio would want the other stuff. But sometimes.
No, but.
The ex officio may have to run a meeting.
They may have to run a meeting.
I think the intent of that was just to say that you couldn't be the chair.
Right.
That's, I think that's the intent.
Just want to make sure I'm, we got the language right.
Doesn't say you couldn't chair a meeting.
Yep.
But we'd have to tweak this, because right now we have the chair as the failing this.
Yeah, and we have, this is our chance to do it.
Yeah.
And get it done right.
Did you pick a date for when you're continuing this, too?
That's where we got to, we got to pick, right?
Workshop meeting, which is the next meeting, right?
So the next meeting is August, what, 4th?
I think it's the 6th, August. The 10th is a Sunday.
You can't go to your electronic devices.
Oh, my God.
It's a calendar.
August 6th.
August 6th, huh?
Yeah.
All right, well, can we continue to August 6th?
Yeah.
Ending.
To the 5th?
Yeah.
6th.
The 6th.
Oh, 6th, right.
Sure, my birthday was Wednesday, my birthday is 7th.
Forgot. So, again, for anyone watching, we're going to continue the public hearing for the, the rules and procedures for the Placeta Planning Board until August 6, 6:30. All right.
I will go through and clean up the minor typos, too.
And, all right.
So that should be sufficient.
And then, then when we, you know, if there are changes, then we'll just, that are not like scribbler changes and such like that, those will be the ones that are read in as opposed to having to read.
Yeah.
No, I'd rather see you read the whole thing.
No, no doubt.
I think we have rules and procedures for the ex officio member.
I think the recording cut out, you got to start all over.
All right. Well, I think, all right, so that's, that's fine. I guess we're new, well, old business, really, kind of. We had a meeting, we had a meeting, the, the planning board, well, myself and the planning board secretary met, spoke in front of the board of selectmen meeting on Monday with respect to the question of impact fees. I mean, there's, you know, just by way of recap, there's a bit of a budget shortfall and the need to kind of maybe move monies around from different accounts and such. So we'd initially appropriated approximately $20,000 to do impact fees. We had two requests for proposals that were returned to us. So, you know, before we could move forward and decide what we're going to do, you know, we kind of had to get some clarification from the board of selectmen and town manager. So we don't have full access, well, let me put it this way, the request for proposals that we, that came in. We'd stipulated that we wanted to, you know, have the option of doing all the impact fees, you know, so that'd be the school impact fee, recreation fee, public safety, and then there was a new one for, for roads. Or we could have the app, or, or approach it in an a la carte, in an a la carte fashion. All right, so we're not going to be in a position to do, to choose a, a study on all of the impact fees. So, you know, the a la carte portion then kind of limits, kind of decides itself, you know, because we have one applicant that basically came in with, if you wanted to do any one of the impact fees on an a la carte basis, then, you know, we have one of them that's indicating that, you know, we're 25, $28,800, you know? So you pick one, that's how much it's going to cost. The other one provided a range of, of, of a cost if we were to do it a la carte. So basically, we're limited that we have $20,000 to do something with respect to impact fees. All right, so I think the logic that was, was discussed was what would be most impactful doing the impact fees, most bang for the, for our dollar, would probably, we should probably look at something like the public safety impact fees. All right, because the other, the other impact fees are dependent in essence on, on residential development. All right, so if we're not seeing a large amount of residential development, then that sort of decides itself, whereas the town, you know, if we, we haven't updated our, our, what do you want to call it, public safety impact fees since 2017?
It was like eight years or something like that.
Yeah, so it's eight years.
It's actually, I went back and looked, it actually was, you know, when we played around, it was 2019, August of 2019.
We're talking, it's over five years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're at six years. And, and remember, too, in, in, just in the public safety, that does capture a residential development, too.
It's everything.
It's everything, it's just roughly half of the unit.
Yeah.
You know, what you're picking up versus.
But as Richard was just saying, when, there's not a whole lot of residential.
No, no.
All right. And the other factor is that of one, this, you know, the one that allows for an a la carte basis for public safety impact fees is, you know, for that update alone, it's 15,000. So that would give us, you know, that would be the, the Pujerie Planning and Development, RFP, all right? So that would leave $5,000. But in, in that, that $5,000 remaining, you know, there's an additional meeting component to it that, in the event that the consultant has to do something that's outside of the scope of what it is that he's, he has to do some additional consulting or whatever, there's a thousand, $1,100 per meeting caveat. So in that sense, you know, the remainder of that $5,000 would kind of contemplate, would contemplate that eventuality. So, you know, I think you've all probably seen this, I think the, this was disseminated, the, the impact methodology, so I'll just read across it. So the two, the two applications that we got were for Pujerie Planning and Development, Inc., that they're in 253 Jensen Road, Milford, New Hampshire, all right? So the a la carte portion of the, of this would be like for the school impact fee, it'd be $20,000, recreation, $25,000, public safety, 15, all right? For the new road impact fee, there was no submittal, you know, for that. There were some questions when I, when I spoke with them, there were some questions as to what it is that we were trying to accomplish, and maybe that was something that, in a later discussion, we could do. The other applicant, DTA, DTA out of Raleigh, North Carolina, if they were, we're going to go an a la carte basis for any of the impact fees to update, it's $28,800, all right? Which is out of, out of scope, you know, for what we have, we have approximately 20,000 to work with. So it would be my, you know, my sense that, and also the consensus that I had coming out of the, the selectment meeting, that the updating the public impact fee for going with Pujerie Planning and Development.
And they're from New Hampshire, too, right?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, Milford.
Yeah.
Which is, they're familiar with the area more than some from North Carolina.
Sure, all right.
He also, he also did work for the town some years ago, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think, I think recently he helped do the master plan update, maybe two versions ago.
Well, that's good to know.
I mean, that's, I think, you know, and I think, didn't he work as a part-time planner here, too?
That I don't know.
I thought, I thought so, too.
All right, so in terms of what we do next, I mean, I have a, I have a draft motion that I can make, and we can vote on, and, you know, and then it's, you know, so.
You think the sooner we start this one, the better we are?
Agreed.
You know? Yeah.
All right, so based on, okay, I move, I move the forward, the contract, move forward to enter contract negotiations with Pujerie Planning and Development for the related consultant work as it applies to the public safety impact fees, based on the response to the board's RFP to update public safety impact the methodology. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, is there any discussion we already had? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? It's 400. All right. I think the last item that we had, that probably you should all have a, you know, we, the zoning subcommittee met to kind of work over, to take a look at the, sort of the proposed work that we're looking to do that came out of our legislative update analysis. There might be something else that comes down the pipe, you know, I think that might have been recently signed, but this is what we're contemplating, kind of moving forward in sort of an omnibus type zoning war. All right. I think the intent is to then, you know, you know, for us to look at this, but we'll also be probably pushing this also to, after this meeting, pushing it to board of selectmen on Spation Commission and, and the ZBA, you know, just as, you know, just sort of, you know, to kind of work collegially on this, that if there are any comments or anything that those, those other boards want to weigh in on.
Building inspector also.
In the building inspector.
Did we hire a new building inspector?
Starts on Monday.
Oh, we got one.
Okay.
All right. So, I mean, do we want to, Dan, do you just want to give it a look very high level? I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory in terms of.
Yeah, I mean, I would love, everyone should read them. I could, given that the governor signed everything, that I was hoping some of which he wouldn't sign, I, I can, I can go back and tweak a couple of things here and then have them in here, and then so everyone can, and then we're working off a pretty good draft, you know? If we're going to solicit the comments, I, I would say you're in the 90% range of what the thing would look like. I can get that done by probably Monday, so we can send these out Monday, if that works.
And if anyone, again, has anything that they want to add, looking at this.
Yeah, shoot it, shoot it to me, I don't put anything in, I don't, you know?
I was there, so.
Yeah, no kidding.
No, I'll tell you, I'm glad to see it's being done right now, instead of that rush at the end of the year.
Yeah. Well, I think that was our consensus was, even if we had to knock these, you know, two off at one meeting, one off at another, it's not the worst thing.
There are like certain dates, right, when we can finally, I don't know what the dates are.
Yeah.
But if we could find when we can, when we have to have our hearings and everything, but to have them set and ready to go.
Yeah.
That's a home run.
Well, just, just talk for one second about, you know, again. Well, just just talk for one second about, you know, again, you know, because I think, you know, moving, I mean, what are we looking at moving a lot of this stuff into, I mean, Article out of Article five, right? Article five in essence is going to be.
That's the big, it's essentially if we want to, the idea is left all the text other than, I mean, there's a lot of red in that, but a lot of it's just correcting defined terms, is to move all of this stuff into a table. You can open that up and just look across for all the permitted uses, all the dimensional requirements. It takes about 40 pages out of the ordinance. Because these these, if you you can look at 100 ordinances in New Hampshire, 70 or 75 to 80 of them are all tables, you know? I think it it lends itself to me to to an Excel table versus a Word document, which is what it is now.
So we're talking about here, like, your the table of permitted commercial uses and such, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so if you want to just take a look at that, what we're talking about, where you just have, you know, you have permitted uses and then you just kind of go right, you know, C one over C two, C three and such, Village Center.
And it's it's still raw, you just need to format it so it looks prettier. And it doesn't have some of the tweaks from the recent legislation like multifamily and commercial districts.
All right.
I didn't see that one going.
Was that one, was that one that passed?
That passed. So the the ones that passed are the ADU one, which effectively, I mean, we allowed detached units in Plastow, but some of the way we allowed it has gone away. You know, that has to change. And we define, you know, housing units by family, you know? That has gone away. We can't, we can, we can define it. And I I've got some language, like household language, that that we can we can use. So you don't have a single family dwelling, you know, and we have the definition of our zoning ordinance of family. We have to kind of play with that to meet the the new statute.
No, just just the kind of, you know, just game stuff out. I mean, there's not much in terms of it's buildable in Plastow right now. But, you know, I mean, I mean, I think there's, there might be something to, whether whether or not it, you know, like in our C one district, you know, if you if you did have, let's say, I don't, I don't, I'm just, I'm just talking out loud, you know, if you have multifamily also in in that commercial area, I mean, it's so, I mean, there are, there is some property that's there that's not currently being, you know, used. But, you know, if you had an arrangement like that, you could have something potentially that's attractive where you have, let's say, some sort of commercial type arrangement, you know, last version of a Tuscan type arrangement in the C one area.
Well, you have you have two things going on with that with that particular particular statute. One is the permission, you know, of multifamily housing in the district, in a in a in a commercial district. But you can require that, say, the first floor has to have retail use, you know, which the way I've written it in the draft does that, you know? So it doesn't obliterate the the commercial. The other is this notion of adaptive reuse, which also kind of stuck in the air and it comes right out of the ours, the past RSA, which is rehabbing existing buildings, you know, that may suit better suit for residential, you know, multifamily use. We don't have a lot of that in Plastow because because of the, because of almost the mall like nature of of, you know, our main commercial district. So, but the idea that we do have some pockets of land that may be attractive to be developed if there was a residential component to it, you know? So, I mean, that's the.
Yeah, there's there are a little, there are a few pockets out there.
Yeah.
We're not sitting on a ton of pockets.
No.
There are a few.
I guarantee somebody's going to find them.
Of course they will. Of course they will.
It's just.
I'd be shocked if they didn't.
Even like the, what's the, what's the, the storage unit that's currently right there in the front? There's still nine and a half acres, I think, that's behind that.
There's a chunk right there.
Sit in the back, right? Sit in the back, yeah.
You know, and you have the that area, that drive through area. That's, again, that's, it's not huge, but then if you were to, you know, just make it more attractive in the sense that you you can combine maybe a residential element with some sort of commercial, you know?
All you have to do is go up and look at what they did and look what they did with the Rockingham race track.
Yeah.
I missed that race track.
Oh, jeez.
I spent a lot of time as a kid up there, so.
I don't know what you're talking about.
It was it was an easy drive from home, so.
All right, so, and I guess the last thing I have is is we'll just touch upon it because, again, it was at the Monday, Monday night, Board of Selectmen. We did talk about, you know, the, we want to have a circuit rider. We want to be able to engage with RPC. Again, how much do we have to be determined soon? I think that's that was the takeaway. So I think, you know, you know, I think it's, I personally think it's important to maintain a relationship with RPC, not necess and and not treat it as being, you know, calling them in an emergency. We want to be able to have a relationship that we can, you know, maybe maybe this year's lean, you know, almost half the year is gone anyways, but, you know, so, but we can, you know, we could talk about what 2026 is going to look like if it's going to be a little more robust. So I think that's, we're just waiting on on that type of feedback from, you know, Mr. Colby. And, you know, we'll probably reach out to RPC just to make sure everyone's still, you know, we're working towards the same goal. And then we'd like to, you know, probably at least see something for 2025.
And as you start getting into August, which isn't that far away, you may want to start taking a look at the budget for next year.
Yeah.
It's really not that far away.
After our meeting, I already started it, you know?
So.
Because it's going to come quick, because you figure our next meeting's in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, there we are, all right. All right, anyone have anything else?
I mean, and to echo on RPC, I mean, there's some resources there. I'll also put it in a caveat that, you know, my feeling is anytime this board has the opportunity to grab money, like grant money, you know, even if it's in a context which we 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 may not be 100%, we may not even be 30% on, we should grab every dime we can.
Absolutely.
I'm just like.
Absolutely.
I I.
If we don't, someone else is gone.
Well, and not only someone else is gonna, but it keeps us in the ballgame particularly. I mean, most of that stuff's coming through RPC anyways.
Yes.
It keeps us in the game, you know, and and, you know, we're not, we're unlikely to ever have our own planner again, you know? And so we need some of that professional planning assistance, you know, from time to time. And of course, when we're going to need it is when we won't have the money for, you know? So.
And there's, I think there are going to be derivative benefits. I mean, RPC is here and they're working off us and, you know, on and off, like under a grant proposal this time, a circuit rider proposal this time, you know, we've cultivated that relationship, all right? So.
That's my grab the money speech.
I agree 100%. Anyone else? Not, then we'll adjourn the meeting at eight twenty nine.